Okay, great. I had my agenda up and now it's gone. So I'll just go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. I'm pretty sure that now I just need a motion to adopt the agenda. So looking for that at this time.
So moved?
Mr. Ross, seconded by, sorry, Ms. Hall. Roll call, please.
Board member Harvey?
Aye.
Board member Lindby?
She might not be on yet.
Okay. Board member Ra?
Aye.
Board member Talcott?
Aye.
Board President Miakawa?
Aye. And motion carries. Hopefully Cindy will get on soon. You know, just really quick. I'll turn the timer to Eric. You know, in chatting with him over the last week and the last several days about about the budget and preparing for the meeting tonight. It kind of reminded me of, I grew up on a small little three acre farm in Oregon and we used to go to those little local rodeos where you got to participate. And it kind of reminds me this era that we're in right now and all the things that we've been trying to do simultaneously kind of reminded me of a local rodeo where in one corner of the arena, you've got someone trying to wrestle and get a hold of a greased pig. And that's what I kind of feel like with this budget where you know, you think you got a hold of it and then something changes and it slips out from under you. And then the other corner, you've got someone trying to herd the cats. And then over here, you've got someone trying to corral the sheep. And you know, this is the chaos and trying to do all three of those at the same time. And that kind of reminds me like what we're doing right now. We're trying to, you know, we've been working at the budget for way earlier than we normally do. But at the same time, trying to get our hands around that slippery budget that keeps changing. Over here, we're trying to get four or five back online in a hybrid model that we've never done before. And over here, we're trying to implement six through eight. And so all these things are going simultaneously. So as we discussed tonight's budget and all the complexities that are associated with it, just kind of keep that in mind that that the staff that, you know, have been trying to do these three things simultaneously are not superhuman. And so let's just do our best to kind of wrestle with what we've got and do what's best for kids. That's initially what, you know, ultimately what we're here to do. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Eric.
Well, thank you for that intro. And that is true. And I've enjoyed our discussions. But I was just thinking about the work that we've been doing so far this year. And I appreciate the board working with us as we try to keep up to date. Again, as we start to get narrow the year down, I think when you're looking at budget, we know it's going to keep changing and there's going to be different factors. Probably the most important thing that we look at would have been this month. If you were looking at any type of reductions in personnel to help balance your budget, that is your key timeline. The other things that we look at in this budget, some of the things, whether we choose to restore, whether we choose to choose some of the other options in reductions, those can be done throughout the remainder of the time. So I just, I want us to know that as far as urgency, I think we've made our decisions on being safe as one of the action items on tonight's agenda for some reductions in force. I mean, that we've met that timeline and that is a being a very conservative approach. So I think we've met that obligation. The rest of our discussion, we do have time. So, you know, because things keep changing and we may need further discussion, let's just kind of remember that we're right on track. And I think we've, we've made some tough decisions already. But the rest of this, you know, let's just let it morph and have more discussion about it. But Lizette, you want to do your presentations?
Yes. Thank you, Eric. I will go ahead and share my screen to follow along with the budget study agenda document. All right, there it is. Hopefully you can all see it up on your screen now. As you probably noticed in the document, I just wanted to point out that any updates to the previous sections that we had reviewed in the last budget study session were updated just for sake of being able to track those changes easily as you compared what we previously discussed in that document to what we're going to go over tonight. So you'll notice that for the first three sections, because anything beyond that was additional information. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out. I'm going to go over a few of the changes that are highlighted, not every single one necessarily, just a few of them. Because I think we really, I think we all know, we need to spend some time looking at this updated scenario and the one-time funds that are coming our way that are going to have a significant impact. So that'll be a lot of what I center the discussion around. So I'm just going to point out at the bottom of page three here, you see a highlighted, this is some additional information that was provided as requested to just be able to provide some historical comparison of what the January COLA is compared to what the end COLA is at, when the budget actually gets adopted. And for the first four years, we've had slight reductions in the first four years that you see here, 1314 through 1617. And then there's a couple of years of slight increases. And then the past couple of years have been slight decreases with the most notable change being last year, or actually the current year that we're in, I say last year because we're talking about 2122. But the current year, and obviously we all know this was a, has been an exceptional year in terms of pandemic and all the impacts of that. So that's that historical information as we look at the COLA. Another piece of updated information is highlighted here and I indicated we would give you an update on this comparison of LCFF funding as we compare ourselves to, see if I can make this a little smaller so we can see all of it. There we go. The rest of the school districts in our county. So this is all of our Stanislaus County districts. And in the previous year comparison that we had, we were the third lowest. Now we've, I guess, moved up, if you will, to the fifth lowest. So still very low ranking when you look at our unduplicated pupil percentage. And that's the percentage that we get additional funding for based on certain populations of students. So we still continue to rank very low compared to our partners and many of our partner districts in our area that we feed into and that we, you know, compete, if you will, for personnel. So just wanted to provide that update. Going on to page six, we have an update here to the special ed and the out years. And that's because we've also factored in the projected COLA and that has indicated would also be on that potential additional revenue for those out years. And then I'm going to go ahead and go over to page 10 where I'm going to spend a little bit more time going over our updated scenario here from when we last looked at this. So I labeled this scenario D because we had previously looked at, you know, other scenarios depending on where we were with our projections and the different circumstances. So really this scenario D is now updated for our projections and updates with second interim. So that's different from before. And then which that has most notably, the biggest changes is the COLA in those out years. If you recall, previously I'd been adding, I added in a projection for potentially 2122 COLA revenue increase for the district, but not necessarily that second year out. So in our second interim, as aligned to the industry standards and the projected COLAs, those are factored in in both years. So that's another adjustment that's here on this updated scenario D. So based on those assumptions, and again, Mr. Fredrickson spoke to this. This is a constantly changing picture. That one thing that I know and I can tell you with certainty is that, you know, this will change slightly because it always does change slightly. But we go based on the information that's out there at the current time. And that's what you see reflected here in these assumptions. Okay, so based on that and this updated financial picture at this time, I've plugged in then what we have been talking about for the last several meetings, which would be, what would it look like if we restored the reductions that were made to the current 2021 budget? If we restore those and put those expenses back in, what does it look like? And that's all these blue amounts here, putting those expenses back in. And if we did that, what would it take to quote unquote, balance our budget so that we are able to maintain a 10% unassigned board designated reserve amount? Okay, and so if you recall, this was previously about 2.3 with this updated scenario. Now we're looking at a projected potential 1 point, we'll call it 1.5 million here in this 2122 year and just under 2 million in the 2223 year. Okay, so that's kind of the updated just projection, again, taking into account updates with second interim and taking into account those updated COLAs aligned to the industry standard and information that's out now. So then that takes us into, I think, the bigger discussion of, you know, what else has changed? And we have received significant updates to, we've been talking about this as we've talked about budget and planning for budget. We've been talking about the one-time funding that, I'm going to scroll down and make this, oh, it all fits there. Okay, we've been talking about, we know that there was some one-time funding we were looking at previously. It was this funding minus these two blue lines, the light blue and the dark blue lines you see here. This is additional funding based on the new state law that was passed and that would provide this potential additional funding here for our district. So previous to that, we were also looking at and considering in our discussions about how we look at our budget, how we work our way out of deficit spending, how we make reductions and how we do that with potentially some of these one-time COVID funds that we had. So we were already having that, that discussion was part of our planning, part of our consideration. And we were looking at, you know, this pot of money here in the gray, that's just over 600,000 we have until the end of the year. You're familiar with that, that we've been talking about. And then we were talking about funds that if you look from the yellow down to those two purple lines, we had really up until a couple of years to spend this money. And that's, you know, about 8.6 million if you add those up. How about 8.6 million over the next couple of years that we were considering, how do we make the best use of these potential dollars? And you will recall in our lists that we began looking at way early on, we were talking about potentially having some of the positions that were cut, some of the other safety funds that were cut and things of that nature that we could possibly use some of this additional one-time funding for. Well, now, these two blue lines are, is the new funding that was just signed into law last week on Friday by governor. And these are estimated amounts based on school services projections, which usually come in really close to the final. But based on these projections, we would be looking at just over $7 million of additional one-time funding that we would be expecting. And here's the big difference with these funds and why I kind of illustrated this in a timeline is because these funds really, I put them in chronological order, come in and trump, if you will, the timeframe for the rest of these funds that we were looking at before. So these two blue lines, just over 7 million of additional one-time funding that we really, if you look at, here's the end of the this current year, we really have this chunk really pretty much next school year to utilize this funding, which is, like I said, just over $7 million of these funds. So this is a significant impact and why we're, you know, presenting all this information because of the timing of our discussions. And although it presents some time that we have to kind of step back and relook at this, really the timing of it, considering we're just beginning, we've been having budget discussions, but we're really starting to look at now maybe some more concrete directions on board and asking, how do we move forward? This presents a new opportunity and some new funding to not only look at the current projections that we were looking at with reductions, again, about 1.5 million and 2 million. Both of those together are about $3.5 million of reductions that we were looking at. And now we're presented, you can see here in total, 16 million of funding over two years that we need to work on planning and seeing how we can make really the best use of these funds over the next couple of years. Potentially look at offsetting some of these reductions that we were considering or offsetting some of the previous reductions that we made and looking at how those could be potentially restored. Also looking at how we continue to use them to meet our COVID related needs that are greater, things that we're providing that we never did before. You're familiar with a lot of those things, the PPE, the additional technology, all those things, additional resources in terms of staffing and manpower that we need to be able to provide those additional resources that we'll need to do and will continue to need to do that over these next couple of years. And also even potentially, because with some of the new stimulus funding here in the dark purple, if you remember, we looked at that dark purple and our, in previous, we had previous discussions on all this COVID money. Even some facility things, because that was part of the language that was included in that bill and allowed for some potentially, you know, long-term things that could benefit the district in the long term. Some facility upgrades, potentially things like cameras. I know we've had those discussions. So really it provides that opportunity to look at all those things and see how these funds can be used for, you know, potentially some of each, a little bit of all of those things. So I really wanted to, you know, take time to cover that and point out, I think, that the time on this is what really just changes, changes the discussion. And also, I think, obviously, the amount of funding that we're looking at. And especially when you look at that amount of funding in relation to what we were looking at of reductions, 3.5 million or so over the next couple of years, you can see that this funding could potentially, you know, offset that and provide for those additional things.
Lizette, before you go on, may I, may I comment here? I had a meeting on Friday with CSBA and this is a little misleading because even with the 2.3 million there, there are lots and lots of little stipulations that those are, that is geared to big districts. There are districts that have refused to move forward and open their schools. It's not designated for schools like ours that have already opened and done all the things we need to do with COVID. There's so many districts in California that have refused to even move forward. So this is a package of money that is to encourage them to open their schools. We don't even know if, what we're going to get out of that. We don't know if what we've already put in will be, we can get the money back for. We don't know anything about this money, other than the fact that it was geared, it was geared to, I'm not saying larger districts, but I'm saying districts like in Southern California and different parts of the state that absolutely refused to budge. It even covered some union discussion, you know, and things like that. So I think it's kind of, I want you to be open and aboard to the rest, to the other board members. So they don't think this is just, oh, boy, we got a bunch of money here. There are stipulations and requirements with every bit of this money. And you know what? You can say facilities, but it may not be our facilities. It could be a totally different area of facilities. So I just, I think it's really fair that you tell us, you know, what these, what these things are really saying because they are one-time monies. And if we make the decision to move that, all those things we've cut back into our budget based on these monies that, that, you know, we don't even know for sure we're going to get any of it. I mean, I'm sure we'll get some of it, but, but at any point right now, it's scary to even make that kind of a prediction that we would be able to do that. And that's basically what CSBA said, don't think this money's for you. The valley is not a part of this money. This is money for urban areas.
Let me just interject a little bit there, Lizette. And since Friday, I've done a little bit more research on those bills. And part of my presentation tonight in open session, I will be doing a presentation on AB 86. And what happens with that is there's basically two sides to that pot when you're looking at the in-person instruction. One side of it is getting those districts that have not made any effort to reopen, to reopen. And then there's the other side of those that have reopened already. And one of the key components, and I'll talk about it in open session, is that if you've reopened, you're already grandfathered in. And that you don't even apply for these funds. There's no application to apply. You are automatically funded based upon where your status is on reopening. The only thing that could impact our level of funding with that would be, let's just say we don't get into the red before the first of April and we don't bring back our seventh and eighth graders. That would be, we could lose 1% per day of our allocation because we were, we're in the purple tier. So really that, and I'll talk more about it, really that is our only risk at this point. We don't have to follow the vaccination requirements, testing protocols. We don't, all of that is for schools that have not reopened at that point. But we can do further, you know, again, there's been a lot of information that's come out about that. But it looks pretty solid, except for, again, the uncertainties for us on that first one is if our seven and eight are delayed due to not being in red.
I guess what I'm referring to is the meeting with the Director of Legislation from CSBA, Chris Reeves. Basically, that he was very adamant at that Friday's meeting that, that you're right in what you're saying. But it also isn't money's geared, pointed toward us.
Yeah, I think, and again, I think one of the discussions that came out is it really was targeted. The whole purpose was to target those larger districts in Southern California and the Bay Area who were not even moving toward reopening. And I've heard that statement. You know, our county's done a very good job of bringing some type of, at least some grades have come back. So I think we're not the area they're targeting, but part of the big sell for the governor and the advocacy from ACTSA and CSBA was to ensure not to penalize those districts that have already made the efforts. And that was why this legislation took so long to ever get to this point. But again, I think we're pretty solid, but we need to, you know, we need to, we have time. That's why I made that point. We do have time to continue to analyze this because it's not related to any deadlines for reductions in force, any decisions if we choose to reinstate something. It's not something we have to do immediately. Okay, so we have time to let this little, it needs to sift down a little bit more. Even Lizette will talk a little bit about federal funds that'll be coming our way possibly. But again, we'll have time to sift through that.
And Mr. Fredrickson, can I clarify? And Lizette, correct me if I'm wrong, but these blue monies, and remember, we're going to just color code them but the blue money was signed by the governor on Friday. And is this the one that you mentioned at three weeks after that signing? Then we would receive or know for sure, right? So as we, as we talk about things in the later agenda, you know, that deal with personnel and that sort of thing, that's, that's what we're referring to, that he has signed it and said it's coming, but for it to take effect, for us to receive it would happen three weeks later. So just to clarify that part as well. And then
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. That's kind of where I was alluding to was that, that nothing has, even though the bill's been passed, there's not any definite directions yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I was just going to make that point because I did note that down here. I appreciate the, the opportunity to provide clarification on that point. Mrs. Lindsay, and just make it clear that we are awaiting that confirmation from the CDE. And per the bill, those funds will be confirmed within 15 days of signature. So within the next, you know, counting down probably about, about five days now. But we will, we're awaiting that final confirmation. These are preliminary amounts. And yeah, I definitely want to make sure that's clear because I, there's one thing I want to do is make sure I provide that most accurate and updated information I have to the board. While this is preliminary, it is significant and can have a significant impact on our planning as we move forward. So that is the reason for presenting them as preliminary information. And as Mr. Fredrickson said, preliminarily, and I don't even have this on here. As you know, there's also discussion at the federal level for the new stimulus funding, additional stimulus funding that has passed the Senate and is scheduled to go back to the House for a vote tomorrow morning. And President Biden has already indicated as soon as it hits his desk, he is planning to sign that. And that new package does have funding and significant funding from my research and additional information that I received today from other sources. That funding is additional funding that would come our way in terms of one-time funds to continue dealing with the effects of COVID and offering, you know, additional support and things of that nature for our students. So that's not on here yet, but I do want to share that because again, that could be significant. And I want to make sure that the board is aware of the information that's coming my way. Okay, so I think we've covered the bulk of the information on this page. I'm going to go ahead and go down to the next page and talk some about the potential reductions. So the first point I want to make on this page, and I kind of talk through this here, is just making sure that the board is aware that despite the conversations we're having now about these potential funds coming our way and the specific amounts and the planning for those funds, we also have been doing the work that the board asked us to go back and do and looking at all of our sites, departments, programs, going through the budget and seeing where we can make adjustments and reductions potentially as we looked at eliminating that deficit spending. So we did that across all the departments and, again, sites. And based on that and kind of taking an approach of we need to, you know, tighten our belts and look at where we can make those types of adjustments. Then I have the updated list. As you remember, we've been looking at this list for some time now and updating every time we have a budget study. So this list provides those new updates. I've tried to make all the updates in red again to try to point out what's changed from the last time we looked at this. So I've noted here at the top that we're looking at now approximately 1.5 million potentially for next year based on those projections that we looked at. And I've noted that this is numbers updated based on second interim as we discussed. Up here at the top, you'll see there's not Um, up here at the top, you'll see there's not any red, so those um continue to be the same at the top. Um, down here, and and I want to explain, I crossed out some of these things. And um that's not to say that I'm saying we're not doing those things or making any kinds of decisions like that. But what I'm saying is that these sections right here that are all crossed off, we were talking about potential one-time adjustment to um at some potential options as we looked at these reductions. And I think um given the discussion of this, these one-time funds and and this new influx of one-time funds, um that changes the discussion of trying to make one-time adjustments. Um, because we have that one-time funding to potentially um utilize in place of of these types of things, if you will. Not to say it's an exact swap, but just conceptually speaking, um that's why those things are crossed off. Um, so I wanted to explain that. And then down here in the red, we have um several new um items you can see and looking at departments, programs, sites um that we've added as part of those discussions with all of our our groups and all of our leadership. So um, I'm, I don't necessarily, um, I think we don't necessarily need to go through each one of these items, but I just want to point out they're there and um can take any questions. I don't know if we'll leave all the questions to the end as we look at that potential list. But I think what I'll summarize from this list is, you know, based on our discussions that we just had and looking at this one-time funding. Um, while before um that information came our way, we were talking about um in our timeline, asking the board for direction on how to move forward with these uh specific reductions and potentially selecting which of these the board um wanted us to, you know, look at incorporating into our budget planning and moving forward with. At this time, based on the discussion of the one-time funds, um we don't see that um a need for that recommendation at this point in time perhaps, and the board can absolutely decide otherwise. But based on 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 um what we've discussed and and us looking at this and looking at the the funding and the amount of the funding, we feel that um at the next board meeting, we can come with a plan and looking at those funds, not only for next year, but the two years that we have to utilize those funds to see how we can incorporate um potentially some of these things into our long-term planning to help us um, you know, mitigate some of these potential reductions and and being able to meet as well, like I said, the additional COVID needs. Um, so it would be our our um recommendation not to necessarily have a specific direction on, you know, this line item, okay, this line I'm not, and and waiting until we bring you that plan which we're showing how um we would make use of these funds over the next couple of years in in um working with that as we plan, uh continue to do budget planning. Um, so that's what I will um comment on that. And then um the the next pages, I'm not going to necessarily go through all of these things. I think um what I'll just say on these next sections is um we've, I think we're speaking through some of the things that are um mentioned already in the document up here. Um, we're speaking about um potential need for um changes in the technology department and and as a result of a upcoming vacancy with Mrs. Reed. We're talking about um, you know, the upcoming potential needs for special education. Um, administrative support, we're talking about the positions that were in the previous reductions um that for the current year and have recommendations on um on restoring those potentially with these COVID funds and or one-time funds. And then um we're talking about um professional learning and induction. It has an explanation of the um changes that we've seen and the how we funded it, how it was a reduction in the current year, but going forward, this would be the cost and explaining that. And then um lastly, we have the usual capital facility project, um reminding you that we have some potential future funds um coming our way once we get state reimbursement. Um, and then the capital project plan that comes to you every year is part of budget. So I think that wraps up, um, and then the last page, sorry, provides the next steps in our timeline. So I think that wraps up um all the information I have at this point, and I'm happy to take um questions or um, Mr. Fredrickson, do you have anything further you would like to um add?
Well, you know, a couple of things. One, again, we're still dedicated to following board direction of the desire to not have deficit spending. We've, that's been very clear to us uh as we've looked at that. Um, and the the term, we're not trying to kick things down the road. We're not kicking that can down the road. You know, just to kind of get blunt about it. I I think this is an unusual time. Um, because the, if that money that, if it materializes like they say it's going to be, it will allow us to deal with the deficit. It will also allow us to align, like especially the blue money. It will help us align with the needs uh to deal with uh learning loss, extended learning, um personnel issues for supervision. Um, it it really, and the whole technology discussion we're gonna have, and and we'll talk more about that. I do feel it's about, I'm trying to look at a balanced approach, respecting the desire of the board to not have deficit spending, and I totally agree with that because that's just, you can't continue to do that. Um, and we acknowledge that. And hopefully that second interim is that and projections outlined our desire to do that. Uh, but we also realize we've got to be able to provide for the the demands that were created by the pa- by pandemic. And I think that's why we're seeing these funds coming our way. It's political. We know that part of it is political. But the other part is there's just the acknowledgement of how it's impacted our students and the demands is gonna take uh to do that, to, you know, provide those services. So um I just want to make sure that's clear as with the board. We're, we're, again, uh, we're right on the same page with you on wa- wanting not to live in the world of deficit spending. And uh, but these, it's just an unusual time. These are just, I I've never seen this chunk of money being presented, even if it, even if we didn't get all of it, sixteen million dollars and the impact that that has in a two-year span. It could also help us pay for some things down the road that would have impacted our general fund. So things that the the board has been desiring to do that meet the requirements and yet save us money in the long run. And I think you've seen a lot of that with technology because this pandemic was so, you know, and distance learning uh required so much technology. We've been able to buy things that we would never have been able to buy uh to replace, to have devices for all the age students that we have and all our grades. Uh, even tonight, some of the discussions about, you know, the owl, which will be an interesting discussion. Uh, but even some of the things that go along with the owl, whether we bought new Elmos that support that, those Elmos would have been things that we would have needed uh down the road for our staff anyway. So that's the kind of strategic planning uh we need to be able to do. But we do acknowledge the 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 concept of not doing deficit spending. I just keep repeating that, and uh that's important.
I appreciate that. Thank you for adding that, Mr. Fredrickson. I think that was a great summary. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you to the, to both of you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and put this out to the board right now for um some questions. Let me check our, we have about fifteen-ish minutes, so I'd like to give everyone an opportunity if they have any questions. Um, I'm gonna start with Mr. Raw.
Thank you. Um, so on this, uh, I'm just gonna put forth a couple of thoughts and ideas in this process. Um, being that the money that the government is um throwing our way, and it is, as uh Mr. Frederickson said, um substantial, I believe that we should account for it separately like we have been um over probably the past year where we have a spreadsheet and we're accounting for these one-time funds. And that they don't co-mingle into our regular budget. If you do need to put it on the budget sheet, uh, put it as a separate line item so that it is easy for the board and the community who doesn't regularly look at items like this and they can easily just see which are one-time dollars and which are ongoing dollars. So that would be one suggestion I would make. The second suggestion is, is that um I have no adversity to um using one-time funds on personnel. As we all know, at least eighty-plus percent of our budget is people. And so when you're dealing with this large um a volume of money, you're probably going to use it on people um at some point. But here's the danger in that. Sometimes, and even over a two-year period of time, if we use the one-time funds on people, I think it needs to be accounted for separately. And what I mean by that is, is that, let's say you're going to hire a vice principal or a human resource director or whoever you feel that it would be a wise use of COVID funds on. We're gonna let you bring that because you're in the day-to-day operations of the district. As long as when we hypothetically, let's say it was the human resource director, and we say we're gonna hire a human resource director with one-time funds, we know that we can only hire him for two years. I think it's important that when we hire that person, we tell them, we are hiring you for two years on one-time money. It is not part of our regular ongoing budget. Rather than the person being hired and then slips into some type of ten-year or something, and um then they have to be part of the ongoing budget, which would then cause us to go into deficit spending in year three. So it's just an accounting way of doing things. Um, I I think I have no aversion at all to you using these COVID funds as one-time funds in our budget as long as they're accounted for as such. And that if it comes to people, that those people know that they're being hired with one-time funds and that it is temporary. So that would just be my two pieces of the puzzle. When you bring it back to us in the future, that it's not just all lumped into the giant spreadsheet and a board member cannot decipher what is one-time and what is ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Raw. Yeah, and the tricky thing I was thinking of too is when I was looking at it, you know, some of it's for good for one year, some of it's good for two years, but the one-year funds that can only be used for facilities and the two-year funds can be used for safety, you know what I mean? So it's just, it's just, it's a nightmare for you, Lizette, honestly, and your team to try and figure out what where blue dollars can go and where, you know, and and I've kind of associated as it's, I told Mr. Fredrickson, it's it's like a tale of two budgets. I mean, we have our core, long-term, sustainable budget that we work with all the time that we're trying to reduce deficit spending. And then we have this budget overlay that's this temporary money that has an expiration date that's kind of what I call the Band-Aid budget that that they're just giving us, and it's really short. And like Mr. Ross saying, you know, we can do some real good, um, you know, tutors and mental health, you know, some really good things in that two years, but whether that's sustainable or not is is what's in question. So um Mrs. Talcott, you were next.
Um, I just wanted to piggyback Mr. Ross. I was hired at Stanislaus Union with COVID funds, knowing it was a one-year contract. Um, and so it's very possible to do. They, they hired three teachers to be roving subs in the district with COVID funds, so they had them. Um, and I was looking at the, I guess it's page twelve, page twelve. And I just had a question of if we get all of this blue money and the possible federal monies and all that, are we trying to get rid of the red? Is that our long, our short-term goal, I guess?
Sorry, can you say again, are we trying to get rid of the rest? Is that what you said?
Yeah, red, turn it back black, the red.
Oh, the red.
Turn it back black.
That would be part of what we would consider as we look at the plan and the use of the funds. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Kiva's Talcott, um, Harvey.
Can I, can I say something right there real quick, Jen?
If it pertains to hers, but you've already had a chat to Mrs. Harvey.
No, I just wanted to say to her, her um comment, it is to get some of that red out of there and bring back to black, but some of it may not be something that we even bring back at all. So it's not all of everything in that, on that list would be necessarily something we would bring back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsay. Miss, Miss Harvey, do you have any questions or comments?
Not this time. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Lindsay, did you have anything further?
No, just, just um what echoing what Mr. Ross said, I think, you know, I've lived through those days of getting one-time funds and then having to let a lot of people go because uh there was a lot of hiring that went on and then we had no money to pay them. So that's a heartbreaker.
It is, and it's super unfortunate, and that's what we've been dealing with for the last few years and and yet, you know, our choice has to be, we either use it as we're, as we get it and do some good or we let, or we send it back and say, you know, so that has to be the discussion we have later. Mr. Frederickson or Ms. Aguilera, is there anything else you'd like to say to wrap it up um before we finish our study session?
Well, just the other thing too, and 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 we'll, we'll process this. It would be nice, as we look at our budget and not considering one-time funds, but just looking overall, our desire to stay out of deficit spending, really dig down into our budget, can we do things with this one-time money that can help be sustainable? Not, you know, personnel is one thing, you know, but can we really be strategic and help ourselves out beyond the two years? That's just, that's the frustration. I think Mrs. Mia Cow and I had a discussion with this. It's like, you give us this huge amount of one-time money. If you would would extend it and let us use it wisely, we could extend it out and then have a a long-range plan to stay out of deficit spending. Um, so whatever we can do as a team to try to strategize this pot of money that can really move us even beyond two years, that help us out enough. So we're not looking at that every year under, like when she showed the LCFF funding model, we're underfunded compared to other districts, and yet the demands and, you know, um, pirs and stirs costs, i- i- it always out, um, it never meets the cola. It's always more than what we get in a cola. So we're always gonna be facing deficit spending uh if we don't make wise choices with that. So again, I think it's just a really good time for us to try to uh plan beyond the two years as well.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I missed, just like Mr. Ross, Miss, Miss Harvey and I were having a conversation, you know, in terms of participating in Legislative Action Week um next week and what we can bring to the table and say. And that's, that's number one on my list is this one-time money is killing us. We can't do any long-term good. We can't do, make length, long-term change with one-time money, and it's super frustrating. So that's one of the things, and and we'll be getting with staff to see what else we can bring to the table. Mr. Raw, go ahead.
Yes, um, this is okay, I think you can hear me, right? Okay, um, it doesn't have anything to do with this specifically, but I know that um Mr. Frederickson has made a plan over the month of March to bring all the grade levels back. Um, I noticed um as Mrs. Silva had sends us those Friday updates that we lost three hundred kids. Um, when we use our phone system, email system, when we're sending notifications out, have we identified the three hundred missing kids? And have they, um, have they truly moved away? Um, is there phone numbers, emails? What what I'm trying to figure out is, is that we, we are three hundred kids down, but somehow our technology is sophisticated enough that we should be able to identify those three hundred kids, uh, at least maybe two hundred and fifty of them, uh, with the attrition to work. Any thoughts or ideas um where those people went? It's hard for me to believe three hundred kids moved out of Stanislaus County, out of Sylvan District alone. That's just a huge number. It's like, what, I don't know, five percent? I I don't even know. I didn't even run the numbers, but it's a lot. Any thoughts on where those three hundred kids went? Any communication or anything?
Any staff?
I want an answer from staff.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, staff, we have not done, as far as I know, enough analysis on that to say anything, but definitely something to dig into.
I I don't think it would be too difficult to take last year's roster and do a comparison. and do a comparison, you can even do it in Excel, to this year's roster and see, and then exclude all the eighth graders that left. And that would leave you with a, at least a couple of hundred names on there. And even if you sent out a, a phone call or an email or a text on our, on our system, we might be able to find what happened to those kids. And even if we got a sampling back of maybe twenty kids, we might be able to extrapolate from that. Did these kids really move? What happened to them? But I don't know, I, uh, to me, it was such and a huge exodus that it was eyebrow-raising to me. That that number left our district just in COVID times.
Good point, good point.
Okay, very good. Um, I just got an email from Velma saying, it looks like we're back online if you need, need to get back on your agenda.
I wish, that's what I was gonna tell you. I just got back online.
Yeah, it looks like we're back online for a regular, regular session and I had something else in it. Gone. So um, we'll go ahead and close. Yes.
Jen, real quick, I just wanted to comment to George. George, this is um, I think it's happening in a lot of the districts. Um, it was just um a, a lot of people that, you know, um, worked seasonally and just chose not to come back uh as early as they ma- normally do. We may see an increase after, after the, the spring break.
Well, there's, there's a lot of people that moved. There's also a lot that, several that chose to do homeschool rather than have seven five to seven children on devices, all the same. I mean, there's, I'm sure it's multiple issues, but we're not the only district. I heard Modesto City when I was listening there. We're meeting um today. They said the same thing. They have the same numbers. Six minutes. If you have anything else you'd like to add?
I just wanted to point out that, yeah, I want to share that lots of districts, all the conversations we're seeing are experiencing very similar uh situation. But the other part is, um, if you may recall, I touched on this in our funding considerations before in our last budget study session, but because of, of the situation with the pandemic, our funding for next year will not be based on our enrollment or attendance this year. It will be based on last year's attendance. So we have that year to um, I guess, work on that. Not that we're gonna wait a year. We're definitely gonna see what the numbers are coming in and everything for next year. And I think that's a great suggestion of looking to try to identify some of those students. But I just want to make sure that the board's aware of that in terms of funding and that impact.
Great, thank you. Dee Dee, did you have something or were you just scratching? It was this, so you gotta be careful.
Yes, can I, can I ask um again what the link is to um the closed session? Where it is? Um, I know, was it in the Friday update or was it in?
Alma sent an email called Board Meeting Links on Monday, March eighth.
Yeah, it was yesterday's.
Yeah, but it only has two.
All three.
Oh, I only got two.
There's four links. Yeah, Mrs. Lindsay.
Huh?
I will resend it to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if that's it, that gives us five minutes of a break before uh we do closed session. Make sure, please, I have at least three people that check in to to open session um first and then uh we'll go straight to close. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for their.